Okay, you're good to go.
Okay, well, welcome everybody to the Library Board of Trustees regular meeting agenda for April 8, 2021. And I'm just reminding everybody that due to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of all of the public, we are still doing this. We're having our meeting remotely, and no one's in physical contact. And yeah, and the public does have access to through this, through our, the Zoom meeting. Okay, and so we have roll call. Sean?
Yes. Bianca Richards.
Present.
David Ewens.
Yeah.
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Dr. Melina.
Present.
Thank you.
And our council liaison Diana Mahmood is not quite with it.
He's joining us right now.
Oh, okay. And then we do have, yeah, Sally Kilby from the Friends, and then, of course, our staff, Sean and Kathy. And I, are there any, are there any presentations?
No.
And moving along, are there any public comments?
No.
Okay. All right. So we'll go to our first action item. Did you all get a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting on March 11?
They're very detailed.
Yeah. Thank you, Sean. Do I have a?
Oh, you want to make a motion first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or do I need a second?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's been moved and approved to, for our, to approve our meetings of the regular meeting.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Dean.
Dean.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, Bianca Richards.
I, I wish, I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, please.
An adjustment.
Okay, I'm sorry, do the comments then go after we approve them or before?
Before.
Oh, all right. David?
Yeah. During the meeting, I may mention or highlighted the fact that we had met with the Friends of the Library forward, you, myself and Bianca, to review the history surrounding the 21st Century Committee and suggestions for going forward. I'd like to have that noted in the minutes and possible places that should be noted, since it's part of our, I'm just looking over at the minutes, since it's part of our work plan this year would be to note it under there. And along those lines, it was suggested, and you can't change it right now, but it was suggested by Bob Joe, Mayor Bob Joe, that rather than having an agenda item of the, just the work plan for the board, that each work plan item be spelled out, so we can report status on them individually. And that's what I think we started to do last year, but then COVID came along and a whole bunch of things changed.
All right, so if I'm, so on the minutes of March 11, David, if I'm following you right, so number 15, under the Friends of Library, it is mentioned.
No, no, I see it's mentioned there.
But you want it.
What I want to ensure is that it is recorded under the work and activity, because it's a work plan activity that we are supporting that. And then.
That's not what I, I don't know that that's when we, we discuss it at that time, or was it during your comments?
We discussed it, we discussed it somewhere in the meeting.
Right.
And, and where you record it is, is fine, but tie it back to the work plan. I don't mind where it's recorded, but it needs to be tied back to the work plan. So that's what I'd like to have happen, because it is part of the work plan, and that may be it for the Library Board of Trustees for this year in terms of supporting the Friends of the Library in the 21st Century Committee until it gets fired up more.
So I think we just need a new, a new motion that states, you know, to approve the minutes as amended, as described by David. And, you know, Sean and I have the recording, so we can make sure we, we get that right.
All right, Dr. Melina, then, do you accept that?
I'll accept the amendment.
And then Dean, you'll still second it?
I'll still second it, and I'm just, I'm confused as to what addition and where, because there isn't anything on the minutes already about the work plan, because we didn't discuss it. So it seems like if we didn't discuss the work plan during the meeting specifically, why would we be adding after the fact that we did?
It is on the work plan. I mean, it is item 11.
So number 11, Dean.
Number 11.
Yeah, I guess.
And just to, just to clarify, my other point is, on a go-forward basis, not for this meeting, but let's spell out all of the work plan items, so then they'll be there, even if we just say no activity.
Oh, I see what you're asking for.
That, that we can do that, certainly, going forward.
I can support that. I like that idea. That way, that way, we're forced to, to remind ourselves each month if we are not addressing a product.
Yeah.
And, and in addition, it's.
But guys.
The public can see it as well. Okay, let's go.
So we're amending item 11, and we're amending item 15.
I think we're just amending item 11.
11.
No, David also wanted it to say that there was something about he and Bianca met with the Friends of the Library. And all it says here is that he made a report.
Yeah, I'm assuming that David mentioned, we can go back to the audio, to the, to the video and the audio, but I'm assuming that David mentioned that during his trustee liaison to the Friends portion, which is item 16, and that that's where we should, you know, document what it is that he said. And then, again, like he said, tie it back to the work plan.
Okay, so it's, it's 11 and 16 that we are amending.
Yeah.
Okay. You okay with that, Dean?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Then, any other discussions on the March 11 minutes? All right, so then, with those amendments, the first and the second, then, all in favor?
I think we need to do.
Yeah.
Oh, we got to do the roll call? Sorry.
Yeah. Bianca Richards?
I, yes.
David Ewens?
Yes.
Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Dr. Melina?
Approve.
Annie Chang Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, let's see, what are we on? Action item number four, to recommend a letter of support for the Build America's Libraries Act. I'm, hopefully, in the agenda packet, you guys all looked at that, the letter to our senators. Kathy, you want to go into?
Yeah, so I asked the city attorney whether the board could, could send their own letter, and, and I couldn't quite answer that question, but she said that, that you can recommend, make a recommendation to the city council, that the council, the city, send a letter. So that's what the action item is, is for you guys to ask the city and the city council to do so. And then we'll go forward with that, with Lucy Demerjian, and they'll get it on the city council agenda, I believe, is how that works.
So I will move, oh, go ahead.
Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to indicate that we have approved already for this year our legislative objectives. And if this fits within one of our legislative objectives, and we've tried to make them general, then it will not need to go to city council.
That's, that's what I wondered. Yeah, so I, Diana, I spoke with Lucy, and she said, go ahead and get the board's approval, and then.
Right. And then she'll look, yeah, to see if she can fit it in. Thank you.
I will move that we go on record as supporting Senate Resolution 127 by Senator Jack Reed.
Second.
Great.
Do we need, do we need to add a friendly amendment that we will support the draft letter that's included in the minute, in the packet?
That one sounds good.
I don't feel strongly either way. I mean, I think if the city wants to send their own letter, they can draft the letter. If it fits with their resolution, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
I, I agree that I think the important part of it is that as the board, we support it.
What, would it, who's, what's the, who's, the signatures on the letter, is it going to be from the city council, or it'll be with, for the board also?
No, it'll be from the city council.
But it will be the board, we're forwarding it, though.
I will do that. I mean, they need to know that you are, again, the recommendation is that the trustees recommend that the city council authorize a letter to support this, this bill or act. And so that's all you have to do is say that, that you, you, you would like the city to, to support this.
Right. Okay. Is that, then, are we still, then we're still fine with Mario's and Dean's first and second? Okay, all right.
Actually, the second was, I think, David.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I was going to, but he jumped in there quick.
The Friends have drafted, and Sally may mention it, but they drafted a letter as well. There's as much better than, than ours, but we'll let the city manager's office decide what, what kind of letter. But yeah, this doesn't have, this may not be the actual letter. This is just a sample of what the letter.
Well, maybe they'll combine the two and get a beautiful letter. All right, so do we need roll call then on this one?
Yes. Bianca Richards?
Yes.
David Ewens?
Yes.
Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Dr. Melina?
Yes.
Annie Chang Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends our action items, and now we're going into discussion. And the first item is to designate a trustee as a WISPA contact. And again, I'll just remind you all, women involved in South Pasadena political action, usually at the monthly meetings, the president of WISPA would just go around asking commissioners to just report on what was going on. So, like before, because it's all email now, the, they did this, and I just jumped in and reported about the library. So now, we just need to designate a trustee that would just be then the WISPA contact. And.
Why, Bianca, why do we need to do that? I mean, our minutes are public record. They can read the minutes.
I, I don't, I don't know why we have to do that. I, I thought it was just okay that I just kind of announced what we, you know, I just said what we were doing, and the thing that I.
I think that's fine. I think Kathy had suggested that we, that we designate someone. I think Bianca, it makes sense to do it, because she's definitely there every month anyway.
And my understanding, Dr. Melina, is that, that WISPA asked all of the commissions to do this, and I don't know what other commissions are doing, but.
But again, I mean, I don't know why, I mean, what if the grocery clerks had a meeting and asked us to send a representative? I'm not sure we really need to do this. If Bianca wants to go, that's her business. But I don't know why the library committee has to designate someone. And as far as that goes, I mean, whatever Bianca says is kind of unofficial, because the minutes themselves are the official record.
That's true. I mean, I think it's just, we wanted to have, have a discussion amongst you that if Bianca summarizes the meeting content for WISPA, that everyone is okay with her taking that role. But obviously, yes, that's unofficial, and the official record of the meeting is the minutes.
Bianca, do you know what, what is the reason behind this, that they want representatives from all the commissions?
Because one of WISPA's guiding principle is transparency and involvement in an engaged community. And we, we, the originers of, the organizers of WISPA really promoted the commissions. And so WISPA just feels that at every monthly meeting, that the commissioners should speak up just to say what they're doing.
Really?
And they've done it, we've done it, WISPA's done it for years.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like a controversial issue. We're not endorsing, I don't believe that by doing so, we're endorsing WISPA in any particular way. We're just.
I, I'm, I'm just looking at this from the standpoint of commissioners having to go to the WISPA meeting, or not having to go, but.
Well, but again, David, we have Bianca who's there anyway, so it's not requiring a commissioner to go there. It's a commissioner who's there already.
Right.
But we're setting a precedent for the future.
Right.
Bianca will not be the, the president next year for this group.
Yeah. And what happens with a Chinese club wants a representative, and the, you know, Hispanic chamber wants a representative, and.
Well, but how, how it works, and how, how it has worked in the meetings of WISPA, is that we do, we, we do go around and ask anybody, like the Rotary Club, Club, the Kiwanis, to announce anything. So it's very, you know, anybody who goes to the meetings can talk.
Yeah, but we're not a club, Bianca.
No, but, but, but anybody, so any of the commissioners that are there can talk, any of the clubs can talk, so.
Again, if you go to the meeting as a commissioner and you want to say something, I think that's up to you.
How about we simplify it?
The minutes.
We simplify and just say that Bianca is not restricted from doing so. If she wishes to summarize the meeting, that she's welcome to do so.
I, I have just questioned whether we need to have anything in the minutes about it. Like, I go to Marengo PTA meetings, and I share things that are coming up here. I go to different meetings. Like, I, I don't feel like it's a precedent to, like, say what is allowable. At that point, it feels like we have to say everything that's allowable. And so, like, and I, I'm not familiar with WISPA, but it feels like it's its own entity. It's not a city entity, right? It's a nonprofit entity itself. So I don't know that I'd feel comfortable putting a vote towards one specific person being.
It's not, it's not an action item.
Oh, okay.
But when it came up last, last month, there was some confusion, because WISPA had made this request, and I believe two different board members had gotten that request, and Bianca was, responded to it. So the discussion was, my understanding of last month's meeting, and having read the minutes, is that nobody had any problem with, with Bianca summarizing minutes for, you know, summarizing what took place at the Board of Trustees meeting. But we didn't really, there was sort of some unfinished discussion, it looked like, in the minutes to me, about, is everyone for sure okay with, with Bianca doing that voluntarily? And with the understanding that it's not an official record. The official record is obviously the minutes, and Bianca can, of course, refer people to the, the minutes on the, on the website.
Right. And I, like, going back to Annie's thing, so like, when, when some of us do go to our other organizations, and then they, they, they just, and you just say, oh, yeah, and I'm on the library, and we just approved, you know, fine free. I mean, isn't that okay just to kind of announce something like that? Do we have to always go through kind of?
I think that's fine, Bianca. All we're saying is that we don't want to designate certain people. We already have some designations as it is. What happens when the Girl Scouts come to us and say, we want a representative from the club? And then the Boy Scouts want one. And they say, well, you gave it to WISPA, why don't you give us one?
I see.
I don't really want to be running around town, going to meetings on behalf of the library committee. If you want to do that, go ahead. But I don't think we need to officially designate someone, because then we're going to get other groups that are going to want to designate me as well.
That's a good point. I think that makes sense.
Yeah. So I think, I think we can just close the discussion by saying that, you know, as, as members of this board, you're obviously out in the community talking about the activity of the board, and the activity of the library, and you're representing those things in whatever venue you might happen to be. And Bianca's going to happen to do that at WISPA. So that's, I think that's the end of the discussion. I think we just left open at the last meeting, and I think we needed to just close that loop and make sure there was no one who, who felt that somehow that wasn't going to be appropriate.
And I like, I like what Mario said, we're not going to do any designation. So thank you.
It's not official. It's just.
Thank you. All right. So moving on, number six, Serving With a Purpose, the Mini Conference.
So I don't, David, you've been to Serving With a Purpose, haven't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I'm just sharing this. Serving With a Purpose is a California Library Association subgroup that's designed especially for boards and Friends boards and library foundations. And they typically have a, an annual one-day conference in person. I think last year, it was coming up right when the pandemic hit, so it was canceled. So the, the big conference is coming up in September, and we can register folks for that when that becomes, registration becomes available, if you're interested in attending. But I wanted to make you aware of this, what they're calling a mini-conference on fundraising, which is just an hour and a half over Zoom. And there's no, no registration fee of any kind. So I just wanted to make you aware of this. And if you want to discuss whether some of you plan to attend or would like to attend, you can, you can decide that. But I just wanted to make sure you were informed. And Sally, I think I forwarded this to you too? Yes?
Yeah, I put it on my calendar.
Okay. Sally, what's that? Sorry, Bianca.
Sally, are you going to attend, or somebody from Friends? Okay. Good. Okay. All right. Never, and everybody's got it, so you've got the, the link. So thank you, Kathy. Yeah. Okay. And, and then, discussion number seven, the reintroduction of the in-person library services plan.
Yeah, so I sent you guys some information earlier this week, and I, what I'm hoping is that after tonight's meeting, that I can actually, the city can actually officially state that we're going to be opening in mid-May. We have not yet, so, so as you know, to back up for the, the public who may be watching, you know, we're, we're working through all of the logistics that we need to work through to, to make it safe to open the library. Those fall into a number of categories, the building, technology, some operational things that have to be sorted through. Probably the, the critical and key things are the HVAC, Heating and Cooling Systems Evaluation that is supposed to be done. So Public Works is helping us to make those arrangements, to have that analysis of our system done. My expectation is that the system will not, you know, meet the recommended, the things that, that are recommended. So we'll take some other steps to try to mitigate some of the risks around ventilation, such as putting in freestanding air purifiers that do a large amount of square footage. So, so that's one of the big things that's happening. And then, as I've mentioned before, we have to replace our egress emergency lighting system, and that equipment is ordered and hopefully arriving right at the end of April, very beginning of May, and that will then be installed immediately thereafter. We should hopefully, according to the vendor, have an installation date. He said mid-April, so hopefully, next week, we'll speak with the vendor and actually have a date. And once we know what that installation date is, then we can actually pick an actual date to publicize as our reopening date. And if I'm looking at the calendar, what I'm thinking is, it maybe would be Monday, May 10th, if, if, if the equipment arrives and all of that works out. And if not, it would probably be then the following Monday, which is the 17th. But that's, that's where we are. I heard someone asking about vaccinations. You know, employees don't have to share with us their, their vaccination status, but most have been pretty forthcoming. And I would say 30, at least 30 out of the 36 people have, have been vaccinated or started their vaccinations. So Sean, like he said, is, has his second shot next week. I have my second shot next week. So people are getting close to being, you know, either finished with their second shot, or they've had it, and they're almost through their two weeks. So that's, that's nice for staff and reassuring to them, I think. But, yeah, and then the, now that the county is in the orange tier, we have new guidance that came out. It's effective, I guess it came out last Friday, but it was effective, I think, Monday. In any case, we're now technically allowed to do 75% capacity. But I think we're going to start lower than that to kind of see how it goes, see what the demand is like, see, you know, what, what issues we, we come, you know, what things we bump into, because we can always adjust upward very easily. So we might just go into the first week. I think the calculations that I did, we're looking at like 40% capacity initially, just to kind of see how it goes. And then we can bump up to 75% if we, if we think we need to. And I don't know if you have other questions about the process, or what we're, what we're working on, or lots of pieces to figure out. We, we put in our request to the, to our IT vendor to work on our computer setup, because we have to rearrange the computers to, to create the right distancing. So that's in process. Some of the shelving projects are in process. Some of the furniture moving around, things are in process. So a lot of things are in process. The plexiglass, Smees Guards are in process with Public Works. So pretty much everything is on track. We're working on the publicity and the, the outreach and the information that we'll need to share with the public. But really, you know, getting that emergency lighting system replaced is sort of the, the, we have to do that, and we have to, can't, we can't open to the public until that's finished. So.
I have a question. Are masks going to be required to go?
Yes. And I actually just, I, I reached out to the city attorney last week to get some guidance on that, to make sure that we have the correct information about what, what we can require and what kind of enforcement would go into effect if, if people are not compliant. So she replied to me today, which is really, really helpful. And it's, it's interesting. It's not like the ADA type things. People actually, according to the city attorney, if they are not wearing a mask for medical reasons, they have to provide written documentation of that. So that makes it much easier for us. We won't have the, the situations where people just say, oh, I can't wear a mask, because I'm, I just can't. They can't say that. They have to show something that, that would enable them to not wear a mask. So, yeah, so that's, everybody's required to wear a mask. Obviously, if someone is not, doesn't want to wear a mask, that's why we still have library takeout, so that people don't have to come inside to get materials. And obviously, we'll do everything we can to, to provide alternate resources, services, to try to accommodate people who, who don't want to wear a mask. But according to the city attorney, they, they must.
And how is, who and how is enforcement? Will it be right at the entrance?
Yeah.
Or will it, but who, who and how is that going to happen?
We're going to have to have two staff people staffing the, the entrances. So there'll be one person at the takeout door, and one person at the, what we're calling library abridged, at the, the in-person door. And at the, I mean, again, this is all prescribed by the county. Very clearly what we have to do when someone comes to the building, we have to confirm with them a number, you know, have you been exposed to COVID? Have you been quarantined? Do you have to wear your mask? You have to do that. So we have to go through that with everybody. So, yeah, there'll be staff at the, at the front entrance at both of those locations to kind of, you know, count how many people are in the building, go over the rules with everybody. I don't know if you've been like to Romans, you know, you come to the door, and she tells you, have you been here before? You have to do this, this, and this. Okay, go ahead and go in. So, yeah, it'll take, it's going to take a lot of, a lot more staff time than, you know, it normally would, obviously.
Okay.
I believe Mayor Mahmood has a question.
Thank you. I do. The library has reduced hours in order to avoid having staff on top of one another for the library checkout. When you reopen, do you anticipate resuming the former hours, or just maintaining the more limited hours? Because I think right now, you, you're closed on Sundays, huh?
Yes, we've been closed on Sundays since June. Yes, we, we're thinking that initially we would start with the same hours that we have now, which is 1 to 7 on Monday through Thursday, and 1 to 5 on Friday and Saturday. You are correct. We won't have the same staff burden in that morning hour, because all we have to do is pull the holds. We don't have to also check them out to everybody, bundle them up, put them. bundle them up, put them in order, like, we don't have to do as much. So we'll be through that process more quickly. So it would certainly be possible for us to, to start opening earlier. But like I said, I think our, our thinking is let's start with the current hours that we have and see what the demand is like and, and sort of see what, how things are being used and, and what people are, are needing and wanting. Anecdotally, libraries are still just not, the libraries that are open are not seeing as many people as you might think. So I think it would be smart to just start with what they're already used to and, and see. I mean, if, obviously, if we see, oh, my gosh, there's a huge demand and we can't accommodate the number of people in the hours that we're offering, we would definitely want to offer, offer up more hours.
And I assume for the time being, you, how will you, actually, let me rephrase that, how will you handle storytime and children's programs like that? Will those continue to be open over Zoom?
Correct. Yeah, libraries, I mean, again, the, the guidelines are all very, it's very confusing because, so for example, the guidelines for, for recreation and community services allow for groups of like ten families but distanced. But the library guidelines still say, no, you can't have any gatherings. So I know some libraries are saying, you know what, we're going to use the, we're going to use the Parks and Rec guidelines and we're going to do an outdoor storytime distance. So our children's librarian is thinking about all that and we're assuming we're going to do that kind of stuff in the summer. So summer reading program will do probably outdoor storytime, but possibly indoors, possibly in the community room where there's a lot of room to spread out. And I think especially by the summer, you know, we may be in yellow tier and we'll see new guidelines for, for libraries that may address the gathering issues anyway. So yeah, initially, we'll still be doing things virtually. But I think pretty quickly, we're going to start seeing that transition into some of the in-person programs.
And finally, I, I think the mask mandate is going to last for some time. What are you planning to do regarding signage?
We have to have signage, that's part of the county's requirement. So we already have signage for the staff because that's also part of the county's requirements. But we'll do new signage for in, inside for the, that matches the rest of our branding for the public. Yeah, I'm pretty much, all of that is, is dictated by the county guidelines. You know, they tell you what you have to post, what it has to say and, and all of that. So like I said, we're working on that and just sort of having those graphic, graphics ready to go so that when we're ready to, you know, press print, they're pretty much ready to go. We just have to drop in the last pieces of information.
Thank you. And if any of you have visited any of the, the parks in the city, the, the new signage is up, masks required. They're very nice.
Is, is there any plan to, to remove that signage? Because that signage is right now in the library park. And, and it, it's not being adhered to, but.
Well, no, I mean, I, I think that like Mayor Mahmoud said, my understanding is that probably mask mandates will, will go on for quite some time, even like through the summer, even if we're gathering. So I'm assuming that those, that that signage will remain up. And again, in the library, it's, it's a condition of entry. You know, you come to the entrance and there's a big sign that says, you know, I agree to all these things. And one of those is, you know, mask wearing and, and physical distancing. So we'll, we'll have that signage and we'll obviously all be wearing our masks. And we will need to just enforce that.
And hopefully Kathy, with Governor Nusantara's objective is that basically we will be through with all the tears anyway by mid-June.
I know, I think that it'll be interesting. I mean, the headlines were like, mid-June, it'll all be over. But when you read the detail, it's, you know, there's going to be all kinds of modifications. I think he wanted to make people feel good. But yeah, I, I think that this is, you know, we have to just wait and see. I'm expecting that there'll be masks, but I'm expecting that we will be able to start doing some in-person stuff. And I also think, I mean, in-person like actual programs. And I also think sooner rather than later, libraries will probably start letting people actually sit down and study for a period of time. But right now, that's not the model that anybody's doing. I just saw Pasadena's announcement that they put out yesterday. And, you know, very limited hours, very limited activity, just, just like what everybody else is doing. You can come in and you can browse and you can check out and you can talk to the reference librarian and you can use the computer, but that's it. So I think that that's, that's still the standard and I expect it probably will be for a little while. But, but like I said, if things continue to, to go as well as they are, especially in our county, I, I think, you know, we have to be prepared for, for these in-person programs and activities. And, and the staff is preparing for that eventuality, especially.
Sounds like, it sounds like you've got, you know, you've thought this out and you've got a plan and there probably will be changes and modifications to it.
Kathy, Kathy, has Pasadena published an open date or when they're going to implement their limited opening?
They, Central Library, April fifteenth. I just read the press release. Do I still have it open? I don't think I still have it open. I want to say that they, they're opening April fifteenth, some in-person, what they're calling express services at the Central Library. And then they're doing two other branches and I think those are April nineteenth.
Okay.
And they have some, I feel like I was, you know, looking at it, they have sort of some evening hours. But I mean, I think we're still one of the libraries that has the most actual hours that you could actually come and do anything. I mean, you know, most of the libraries, Alhambra just increased. They had been doing twelve-thirty to four-thirty and now they're doing eleven-thirty to four-thirty. So, you know, nobody is open, you know, like they used to be, largely because they don't have staff in many cases. They just don't have enough people to, you know, they don't have, their staff were not brought back. So. Any other, we're, we're, we're really, I mean, I think we're, we're, we're well, we're, we're well-prepared. And I think we've really thought through all of the issues and the training that staff are going to need to, to be prepared. And, and I think we're ready. And I think, you know, if it weren't for the egress lighting, I think we would have been able to do it sooner. But that's the reality is that that's a project that we're not up to code and we need to have it fixed. So.
Any other comments or questions?
I have two quick questions. Um, thank you, Kathy, for sharing all that information. It's, it's really helpful and it's clear that you guys are super prepared and thought through everything. And so maybe you've already thought through the question I'm about to ask you. But, um, has the staff been trained as well as disgruntled kind of folks in the library? Like for, if they do get that pushback around the mask and is there security available? I know that before the police, the South passing police were patrolling, but I don't know if that's happening anymore and, you know, just.
Yeah, so that's a piece of training that we have to do. And that's sort of, all the libraries are having that same angst around that issue. And that's definitely staff, like the frontline staff, that's one of their big issues that they're worried about. So a couple of things, we've got some really good materials from other libraries that have a, a bigger human resources staff, you know, they have more people to kind of help them work through these things. So we've got some really good training materials from Burbank that we're going to try to modify and use for us that really walk people through. It's really nice. It's like a very graphical kind of walking through having that conversation with a customer. And then in addition, Southern California Library Cooperative, which is our library consortium that we belong to along with all the other libraries in Southern California, they're going to put some funding into training for all of the libraries in the consortium. Because we kind of realized that yes, every library has the same issue. This is the staff's biggest issue probably. And we're all trying to train our staff separately. So it became apparent that that would be really helpful from the consortium at that level to, to provide some training that we can all participate in. So it looks like the funding was approved at the board, the, the board meeting two weeks ago and they're working on it. So hopefully that'll be coming soon. It might not be before we open. But yes, we're, we're, we're prepared for that and we, we have some training and kind of role-playing.
I like, I like hearing that there's going to be a consortium-wide standardized set of rules because, and it's a great question, Annie, because one of the things that I've seen anecdotally that where people run into problems is that the, the, the difficult person feels like they're being treated in an ad hoc manner, just somebody off the cuff making up what they're going to do or not do. And if we are able to have our staff saying, hey, these are rules that are promulgated amongst, you know, however many libraries, we're all following the exact same guidelines, the exact same rules. You know, you're not being singled out here. This is, this is, that, that'll give them the gravitas and, and hopefully the confidence to, to be able to stand up to a, i- in a, in a respectful and polite, non-threatening way, but to, to be, you know, assertive, not aggressive about it.
Absolutely. I talked to the library, the director at Alhambra and, you know, they've been open for many months with their express service. And she just, they just bring it back to the guidelines, county says, the county said. I mean, they just, you know, it's not, it's not us, this is the county telling us what has to happen. And she says that that's been really, you know, successful and it's, it's helpful for the staff because they can, you know, it's right there in writing. It says, this is what we have to do. It's not up to us. This is somebody else's rule, not our rule. And that, that diffuses a lot of situations. But you're right, the more consistency, the better. Unfortunately, you know, th- this is one of the challenges, you know, every city attorney has a different take on different things. So, you know, some cities, they're making staff wear face shields and other cities are, you know, everybody's a little different. But the bottom line is we all have to follow these guidelines that the county has, has published. So that's, that'll help all of us. And then I think the training will also help. So good question, Annie. That's definitely, you know, this, a lot of what we do is already this behavior management kind of stuff, but this is all very different, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it's a new level, it's a new expectation for staff.
Yeah, exactly.
Play this role even more so than before. So I appreciate that there's going to be some trainings for that to prepare them.
Yeah, and don't we, don't we have a, a code of conduct in place? I mean, it's, I know it's a little bit different, but we do have a code of contact, conduct.
The city attorney, when I asked her, you know, what mechanism would we use to enforce this if we had to? I, I, I had looked at the code of conduct and the ordinance to see where in the ordinance this might fall. Because I'm assuming you can enforce it as like a county misdemeanor, you know, some kind of through that mechanism. But I think it's probably better to use the code of conduct and that's what it seems like most libraries are doing. And she agreed with that, that that's fine. You know, we have, the, the rules say, although probably in May, she suggested that the board might want to adopt a rule. Basically, the, the ordinance says, anything that, the, any rules that the board has put into place, those are the rules. And if you break them, you, we can, we can enforce it. So there's two pieces. There's that piece and there's also any illegal behavior. So if you're not wearing a mask, that's illegal behavior. So, so I'm going to look at her email more closely. I just got it like an hour ago or fifteen, maybe half an hour ago to see exactly what she said, but it.
Sure it's illegal, because I don't believe that they're, I don't believe they've made it a misdemeanor to not wear a mask. So it, it would, could violate a rule or a regulation, but I don't believe it'd be illegal.
Okay, so, so then that's even more reason you use the, the code of conduct. I mean, I don't know, you know, when the police cite someone, I don't know what they're using. They're using something, but we would be more likely to just use our, our code of conduct because that's, that's the ordinance that, you know, tells people what they can and can't do at the library.
Go on mute, Dr. Melina.
As I recall, there's a long section in there about removing people from the library. And if you're creating a disturbance, we can ask you to leave.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, if we ask you to wear your mask and you refuse to do it, you are creating a disturbance and that's enough, I think, to, to ask someone to leave.
Exactly. Yeah.
So maybe in the May meeting, we can just review the code of conduct.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can share with you what the city, I'll give you the city attorney's opinion so you can see what she said. But yeah, that's, that's, that's why we reached out to her was to, you know, make sure that we have all that in order before this comes to pass. So.
Okay, right. Any other comments, discussions on that one? All right. Well, thank you. Good. And then, uh, discussion number eight, the proposed changes to the library organizational chart. And did you all kind of look that in your agenda packets? Thank you, Kathy, for all of that.
One thing that I want to preface this by saying that I, I didn't mean to mislead you. But so when I talk about savings, this, this, the assistant director position wasn't funded in the twenty-twenty-one budget that was approved last night. So when I'm thinking of savings and talking about savings, I'm talking about the prior year when it was funded. So from the city's perspective, to them, it's not a savings. I mean, if they're looking at the twenty-twenty-one budget and the twenty-one-twenty-two budget that would include this, it's not a savings, it's an increase. But it's an increase back to what we used to have. So, but I, but I, the finance, interim finance director wanted me to make sure I made that clear and she's right. I, I should make that clear. But the bottom line is that, you know, the assistant director, the bottom line is that we had ten positions. A librarian was eliminated to create the assistant director position. Now we don't need the assistant director position, so we want to go back to having a librarian. So it's sort of, you know, going from what we had to what we, and then we had our experiment and, and, and asking to go back to the same. It's not adding any full-time employees. And then the upgrade, and this is, again, these are both changes that I had, we're sort of in process and in discussion at the very least with this, the former city manager during the last budget cycle. And then COVID came, so it just sort of all went away. So none of these are like brand-new ideas. We've wanted to upgrade that clerk position. It's a little bit awkward because we have a, a full-time clerk one, but we have part-time clerk twos. And, you know, the clerk one is, is in charge when he's here on a Saturday by himself. So he's, he's in charge and yet, you know, paid less than the part-time clerks that are working. And again, I think it's a, a lot of this on this side of the org chart, the support services side is just really not in keeping with modern library services and practices. You know, we talk about clerks. I mean, these are probably people who literally like filed alphabetically and, you know, this is, you know, nobody does that, you know, everybody has to have a lot of technology skills. You know, the, the jobs have changed and the org chart never changed and neither did the job descriptions. So I think that the proposal to upgrade the clerk one to a library associate makes a lot of sense to us. And I think that it's what that, that division needs to be successful and to, to do the modern things that libraries are supposed to, supposed to do.
Do you need us to, do you need a resolution from the board to do this?
Um, I would, what I would need is simply your support if you think it's a good idea. I mean, I don't, you don't need to formally act on anything. But when I go to the, the city to say, this is the proposal and the board is, is supports it, that's, that's the, that would be what I would want to be able to say.
Kathy, it may be in the, right, have you gave, but the, what is it called, the librarian systems, what would their responsibilities be?
The library associate?
No, systems.
Librarian. Yeah, I didn't give you guys a job description. We're still working on that. But basically, that person would be reporting to Barb Posner, who's the, the seat, you know, the senior supervisor in that department or in that division. They would be doing the integrated library system stuff, which Barb now is solely responsible for. And all of the things, you know, whenever, basically any improvement we want to do, when we want to do the app or we want to do self-checkout or if we want to do RFID or, you know.
Is that something that Sensi Ball does now?
Yeah.
Would that work?
And that's why, that's why it takes us a long time to, you know, well, you can see why we're, we were so behind. I mean, you can see by the staffing, you know, we went through these years where we didn't have the expertise, you know, we didn't have librarians. So, you know, we didn't, that's why we're now catching up on email notifications and, and all of these things that we just weren't able to do.
What I was looking at, actually, Kathy, was I was looking at the number of pages that directly report to Ball. And I think it's like seven now going to eight. So I'm thinking that something gets offloaded. So what you're saying, the thing that gets offloaded is the system's activity. So if you could be sent.
I think that the, the idea is that the, I mean, again, this is, we haven't quite finalized what this would look like because we need to finish the job description first. But I'm, I'm actually thinking probably some of those clerks, they have specific duties. So they're. they have specific duties. So there might be clerks that report to the systems librarian, and there might be clerks that reports to Barb. They may not all, they're not all the body necessarily. So the way the org chart shows it now is sort of in flux. But, yeah, Daryl, Daryl, all of the aides report to Daryl. And the clerks currently report to Barb. But if there's a new systems librarian that's in between those things, some of those clerks would probably report to the systems librarian. Like, for example, um, we don't have a librarian that does our cereals, our magazines. I basically do it. Um, and so this person would probably take on our cereal activity. And there's a clerk who does all of the magazine check-in and, and maintenance. Um, so that person would probably work closely with that systems librarian. Um, so depending on the clerk, the part-time clerk's duties, that would dictate who they basically report to immediately, so that that person kind of oversees their, their work.
But going back to Mario's comment then, so what, what do you, you just need us to say yes, move forward with this?
Yeah, I'd like to know if you think this sounds like a good idea. Um, I'd like to know if you think it sounds like a, a bad idea, if you have other ideas of something you think makes more sense, or if it doesn't make any sense to you, or if you need more information from me to, to make a call about it. Um, like I said, I didn't provide you with a job description, but I.
So Kathy, it looks like the number of positions doesn't really change. There's one change in terms of span of control, with one person going from seven to eight. These look like fairly minor changes. If you think these are going to improve the operations and the efficiency of the library, I support you on this.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I mean, I, I think that you're in the position to know, uh, like, uh, Dr. Melina said, there's nothing radical uh, being done here. I, I, I guess I'm, where I'm still a little lost is how the assistant director trend, I, I guess you say from assistant director. It's not you're moving the, the person who was the assistant director to become the library, librarian systems, uh, a person that'd be a significant demotion. I presume that's a new hire?
Yeah, that, yeah, that, the assistant director position is vacant, so that position would be eliminated and the librarian position created.
That was you, right, before?
It was me.
Yeah.
And that, that position was newly created in, in like twenty seventeen. So it was a short-lived, you know, it, it hasn't been on the books very long.
Yeah.
And it, it was very top-heavy.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think we're a large enough library to, to support that. It, it seems more like it was like to get you up to speed so you could take the, the lead job, um, would be.
Yeah, if you read the operation study, it, it's sort of, it, yeah, it says that. It says, you know, we're creating this position, um, with the idea in mind that maybe this person, you know.
Yeah.
Director.
Yeah, I mean, this, this seems, this seems really like a, a good idea. Uh, from the way you've described it, uh, the, the librarian systems would be, uh, an appropriate position as we transition into a more and more technologically, uh, affiliated library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think about, um, as it, so here's an example with, with the app, the library app. So Cynthia Mitchum, who's our digital services librarian, she had to take on the app, because Barb doesn't have time to do that. But Cynthia has so many other things to do. So like, this person would probably take the app back from Cynthia. Um, and if we transition to RFID, that's a massive project. There's no way we can do that without somebody else to support Barb. Um, so there's just a lot of things that, uh, uh, there's so much potential with this, you know, we, our system, our Cersei Dynex ILS, um, it does all kinds of things, and we just can't even, uh, implement.
Again, I, I.
Already have at our fingertips.
I, I think that it, it makes perfect sense. The more technologically oriented we become, the more important it becomes that there's a dedicated person running the back office on that, or it'll just fail.
Yeah. And, yeah, and Barb is, um, she's going to retire one of these days. And, and really, we don't have that, there's not a deep bench. I mean, I'm probably the, the, the person that's most knowledgeable, and I'm not that knowledgeable. So, so we, we would have to get a consult, you know, if, if Barb were to leave suddenly, we would have to hire a Cersei Dynex consultant at probably a, a high cost to keep the library operating. And so that's not sustainable. Um, so yeah, I think this is what we need, and, and if you guys are in support, that's great, and I can share that with the,
Yeah.
the city manager.
Do, do you want to vote from us of support or anything like that?
No, just, I, I think if anybody objects, just say so. Um, but if, but it's, I, I think we have Mario on the record, and I, if, if everyone's in agreement with that statement, then that's the, that's the message that I'll convey to the city.
And I, and I have just, uh, and I really think, uh, when you change a job title, clerk one to library associate, it really holds a lot of weight. And I know the staff really like name changes and titles, and I just think it, and it, it makes sense to be a library associate as opposed to a clerk. So I, I think that's a really good change, just doing name changes.
Yeah.
So it sounds like you've got, uh, you've got our support, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Very helpful. Hopefully this'll, knock on wood, we, we get, we get this to happen this year, hopefully.
And then that just takes us into the library operations update.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of stuff. I mean, obviously, we've just been really, really busy, um, thinking about reopening and trying to get all those, uh, ducks in a row. Also busy with kind of our, um, equity and inclusion and diversity stuff, which we'll talk a little bit about. I did want to mention, um, a couple of things. So last, I think last Saturday, the Parks and Community Services organized their extravaganza, egg extravaganza drive-through, and the library had a booth. Um, so Judy, our children's librarian, worked that. She gave away about three hundred craft kits. So she got a good opportunity to interface with lots of families, lots of kids, lots of people wanted to know, when are we opening? So she was able to kind of talk to people about that and, and get people excited about, um, the library reopening and get them thinking about summer reading program. So that was a big success, and, um, I'm glad we were able to participate in that, and I thank Judy for, for doing that. Um, and then we have, uh, two programs coming up in June, um, which is Pride Month. So they're both related to various LGBT, to, um, issues, authors, they should be, they should be really interesting, and we'll share more once the publicity is ready. Um, Olivia is taking the lead on those programs. So we'll share those when they come up. And then the first, um, comic book discussion was last week. And they had fourteen people signed up, but I don't think they have that many people who actually attended. So they're going to try to figure out why the attrition was what it was and, and, you know, go again next, next month and see how that goes. But, um, everybody's just, you know, really busy. We've, we've just got a lot going on and, and, um, the children's de- department is working hard on summer reading program, so that's, because that's right around the corner. So they're already booking their, their performers and planning their storytimes and thinking through this outdoor storytime and possibly indoor storytime, and so they're on top of that and, and, and everything's good. We're just working hard. That's all I really have. Oh, and, and Bianca and I will both mention this probably, but, um, the San Gabriel Valley, uh, City Council of Governments has a regional homeless, mental health and crisis response um, study happening to look at these issues from a, a regional perspective. And, um, an announcement came out saying, you know, oh, there's going to be a steering committee, and it's made up of city staff from all of the cities, from the fire department, the police department, parks and rec department. Um, basically every department under the sun except the library department. So I wrote to the consultant and said, hey, yeah, hey, what are you doing? You know, so, so they said, oh yeah, that would be great to have a library people. So, um, I'm going to, the steering committee is not an option apparently, um, but they're doing what they're calling, I think, community advisory groups or something. So they indicated that they would be very interested in having library people involved in that. So I reached out to, um, the other San Gabriel Valley library directors. So I think I have Alhambra's director is going to serve, and Azusa's director will serve, and I'll do it. And I think Bianca is, has asked to be on it as well. So at least we'll have a few, uh, library voices at that table. Um, and again, I don't know quite what our role will be or what it'll all be about, but I'll be glad to at least be in the loop, you know, even if I, even if it's not that we contribute that much, at least we'll know what, what's being discussed and what's happening, so.
Yeah, and that was, um, that was a, if any of you are signed up for the City Hall scoop that came out back on March twenty-ninth, the announcement about the regional homeless, mental health and crisis response study. And then when you click on to it, you go into it, and then they ask you a survey, and then they say who's a part of it. So I was very disappointed that religious organizations and libraries were not part of it. So I wrote in to, uh, to the group, the consultants, and then forwarded it to Kathy. Um, so that's.
We had both seen it and went, what, what's happening? I didn't notice they didn't have religious organizations, which like in our town, that's huge, you know?
Yeah, so. But we'll, 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 we'll tell you more about that though, probably. Okay. Um, and then you want to go into the, um, the Equity, Inclusion and Diversity Initiative?
Yeah, I'll just bring this up briefly. I, I know I had said I would write something up, and we, we did work on that, but I, we didn't have something in, in a state that I thought was ready to share with you guys. But I do want to give you a sense of, of what we're doing, and also let you know that, um, today I had a really great, uh, meeting on this topic. So the, the, every year, the state library puts together a forum for library directors. I think it's normally done in person, like, like for a day. Um, but they're doing it in two-hour segments over this, the month of April. Um, and today's topic for two hours was equity and inclusion. And the, the people that were speaking about it are in charge of a program that they, um, have been funded through the state library to, um, work with libraries on an equity and inclusion program. This is their second year of funding. They have sixteen library systems that are in their second year, and then ten systems that are in their first year. So they're really working at putting together kind of a framework and a toolkit and some resources to help libraries work through this. Um, if you're one of the libraries that actually participates, it, it's a kind of a big hurdle. You have to have a lot of staff. I, I mean, they, you have to have a team of like four to six people. I mean, I don't know how we would ever have a team of four to six people that could, you know, work on that, that way. So I don't know that we would ever be in the, one of their cohorts, but they're, they're really striving now to make some of this material and, um, knowledge that they've put together available to other libraries. So that was really inspiring, and it was a really great, um, overview of that program and, um, made some good connections with other libraries that are cohorts and working on it. So I wanted to let you know that, because that was exciting. Um, it dovetails very nicely with what we're already thinking about and doing. Um, so basically where we are is, uh, like I said before, you know, we, we took this class and there was coursework to complete, and none of us could complete it in that three-week period. So we basically went to the, went to the course website, captured all of the curriculum, all of the assignments, all of the background, everything that we need to sort of more slowly walk through that as a group. Um, so that's what we're sort of working on preparing, is what that curriculum is going to look like and how we're going to approach that with the staff. Um, what we've been doing in the meantime, just to kind of keep these issues in people's, uh, in the forefront of people's minds. I mean, the way they talked about it today is that, you know, you're looking through everything with this lens. Um, and the objective is to make sure that your staff are conversant and able to talk about these things uh, comfortably and, and commonly, you know, it's sort of scary still, if you're not kind of keeping it in front of them all the time. So we've been doing little kind of assignments. I've been sending people something to watch or something to read, and then asking them to respond in an anonymous fashion through a, like a survey website. Um, so they're on their second little assignment right now, and it's been really, um, great and interesting to see the responses. And then we're then sharing the responses back to everybody. So the current assignment right now, we watched a TED Talk, um, by an author, and, um, we asked people to respond, telling us about something they've read or watched that, um, helped introduce them to another culture or another, another ethnicity or another race and, and the impression that it made on them, and to recommend something to other people and to let us know, what would you like to know more about? And maybe other staff will be able to make recommendations to you. So people are responding to that, and it's, it's exciting to see people, um, engaging and thinking about these issues and, and trying to just sort of work it into our regular way of thinking is sort of our goal. So that's sort of happening in, in conjunction with this larger effort to, to plan an actual kind of step-by-step, what are we going to do? What are we going to tackle? What are we going to tackle first? You know, I think what we're going to focus on first in talking with Maida and Barb is, um, all, all the issues that, that are happening right now with children's literature. Um, and, you know, do you pull the books from the shelves? Do you, you know, what do you do? And, and having that conversation and deciding what is our, what is our, what are we going to do about these types of materials, um, is I think going to be our first sort of kind of equity, inclusion, diversity initiative activity. Um, and we've already talked about it a lot, but we kind of need to put our framework together first. So that, I, that's just sort of where we are. I wanted to let you know. I know I said I would write something up for you, and, and I, that, I didn't have anything that was ready really to share. But I wanted to let you know that we're not, we're not just dropping the ball. We're very, um, very interested and very, um, committed to, to thinking about this, as our libraries in general. I mean, I think we're really lucky, because libraries are certainly way ahead of the game in this regard, as compared to other city entities and departments. Um, the city has its, we just completed, um, they've hired a, a consultant to do some equity, diversity stuff. And it's, it's for the police department, but it's also for other departments, is my understanding. And so all city staff were asked to take a survey. Um, so we just completed that survey, which I'm assuming will hopefully give them some kind of aggregate information about people's thoughts and feelings on these issues. Um, so we'll see where that goes. But, but the city will, will do what it's doing, but we'll keep doing what we're doing, which is very library services-specific. Um, and I think that makes it a little bit more meaningful to staff. I sometimes think the, the things at the city level, people sometimes feel that you're just sort of doing something pro forma and checking off a box, even if it's helpful, it, it doesn't maybe resonate or stick with you the way the, the library-specific conversations do. So that's where we are with that, and, um, I'll keep you posted, and we'll, we'll share with you as we move forward.
Well, maybe, uh, it, in the future, uh, that could always be a discussion, wh- when it, when we need it. Can, that can just be an automatic discussion.
That's a good point. It could be. We could just put it on there so we could tell you, you know, because some of these things are things where we're going to need your feedback as well. I mean, it's, you know, in this group today, which was all directors from all over the state, they talked a lot about, you know, friends groups and boards, and, and how everybody has a piece of this to, to, to think about and to bring to their, to their duties. So, yeah, we definitely will, will need you guys to be involved. Um, so, yeah, we.
But Kathy, I'm not sure what the problem is that we're trying to fix.
Hmm, well, then I guess we'll have to explain that better to you. Maybe that's the conversation we need to have next time. Yeah, I think that the problem, well, uh, let me prepare something so that I, I can make a, uh, cohesive, sensible statement. But, um, libraries have a long history of exclusion, you know, uh, segregated libraries, people up until the sixties, even into the seventies, people were, you know, African-Americans weren't allowed into white libraries in, in.
But that, that's all historical stuff, and if we're going to do something, I need to know what the objective is, so that we're not just doing activities for the sake of activities. So do, are we worried about who our patrons are? Are we worried about who our staff is? Are we worried about outreach into certain communities? And I just think that, you know, we need, if we're going to have an equity and diversity program, we need to have some problem and some goals. And if we do have that, we might even want to work that into our work plan. Because otherwise, it just becomes activity. At the end of the day, we don't know if we've made any progress or not.
Yeah, that's true. Um, well, that, and like I said, that's what we're, we were going to draft. We're, we're working on drafting up sort of exactly what you're asking for, is kind of a big picture of what are your objectives? What are you trying to, what, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? Um, so Maida worked on a draft of that, and maybe we can get that ready for you for next month. And then we can talk about it a little bit more and see if, if it makes sense to you guys, or if it, if it, if it doesn't seem to fit the bill.
Okay.
Do we have?
Do we have a a mechanism for feedback from the community to be able to see if there is anyone who feels excluded? Or feels like topics aren't covered in in books in the library or just other things that would point to?
Not a formal mechanism, but I would think this is probably part of um, the strategic planning outreach. You know, it it probably part of part of what you're trying to find out when you go through that process is. Are people getting what they need to get out of the library? I mean, the key, the key is making sure that you actually ask the right people. I think the last strategic planning process. You know, you hear from the same fifty people that you always hear from. So we have to make sure that we 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 figure out that piece of it. Um, but yeah, no, there's no real mechanism in place right now. And and again, I don't want to throw some survey out. You know, I I think we need to be very thoughtful and and put it all together. So that we know why we're doing what we're doing, just like Mario said, you know, we don't want to just be doing things for no reason. We want to make sure we understand what we're doing.
So to that end, I think we do surveys and it might be worthwhile to think about what kind of survey questions we want to have in the future. The other thing I wonder about is do we have books or materials in multiple languages? And I just don't know.
We do. We do. We have um, Chinese, Korean, Spanish are main foreign languages. Um, we have, we have in the children's collection, French, German, um, you know, Russian. We have a few other things, but but for our community, um, Chinese, Korean and Spanish are the three adult languages that we mainly focus on.
Kathy, um, and and I I'm embarrassed to say I don't know it. Do we have as part of the library mission statement, anything that implies that? Part of the mission of the library is to act in a public square kind of manner?
Yeah.
Because I would think to your point, uh, Mario, that um, some of what Kathy was discussing. Seems to fit into that sort of public square uh, mantra. That we're we're raised, we're more than just a place you can come to get a book.
Yeah.
It's a a a place for discuss, open discussion and and as part of that open discussion, everyone should feel heard and welcomed.
Yeah, it that's very much. So this is from the current strategic plan. Um, it's not really a mission statement, but it's what we've been using as one. Our vision, the South Pasadena Public Library is a welcoming gathering place in our community to build connections, support creativity and encourage learning. Our values, we are passionate and dedicated to improving lives. We are open to all and honor the diverse nature of those we serve. We demonstrate character and integrity integrity to our customers, fellow staff members and the community. So, yeah.
It seems like, it seems like that discussion is is on point. The question is, Mario, to your point. Do we have a, do we locally have a problem to address? Or are we just um, emphasizing the overall theme? That uh, diversity and inclusion is uh, uh, something that we strive for and should be striven for.
Right, and so it's a question of, um, on the one hand, it's a good thing to do generally. On the other hand, it's, you know, we have books in the following languages. That's nice, but is it adequate? Is there a population that we're missing? Are the holdings adequate? Are we getting, do we get foreign language publications? You know, is there in and regardless of whether or not uh, that's your primary language, it might be useful. For example, have newspapers in Spanish for kids that are studying Spanish.
Exactly.
Or newspapers in French. Um, so I I think that if we're going to do a questionnaire or a survey in the future. We need to ask those kinds of questions. And again, to your point, simply putting this out and waiting for people to come back to us. Uh, doesn't give us an adequate survey. I mean, it's nice because certain people will respond. But if no one from the Korean community responds to us and we think we don't have a problem. It may be that we just, we do have a problem, but we just don't know it because we're not reaching the Korean community.
That's our problem.
Yeah, that that shows that you have the problem is if you can't even get anyone to respond. So yeah, we have to work on all those things.
And I think there's also just the challenge of just the unconscious bias that all the staff have too, right? And I think. To Dr. Malina's point of how do we know if there is a problem or not? And I feel like maybe the assessment you're doing right now is trying to figure that out.
Right.
You know, what are some of the ways that there are actions that may be causing others to feel not welcome? That you just don't realize culturally or something. And I think that's a great idea of like reaching out to folks that are diverse. And wouldn't be typical folks that would give us feedback. And I'll just name that at Marengo, there was specific, or maybe at the school district. I I forget where the conversation took place. But there was um, specific controversy over LGBTQ um, materials in curriculum. And I just named that because I think for us to know what our values are as a library in the community. Is going to really drive what materials are available inside. And just not even to say pro or con of something, but just even just having available, those things available is just, I think, something for us to pay attention to.
And that's part of, that's a very common piece of this is to do a a collection assessment. I mean, people, you you know, we all think we're open minded and 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 thinking of others. But when you actually look at the collection and see that X percentage of your material, you know, there there's, there are metrics that you can use. To really assess what your offerings are. Um, and yes, it has to be tied back to your own community and 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 um, what your customers' needs are. But you also, those unconscious biases may be taking things out of the equation. That that people won't even now discover because because, you know, you didn't, you were unconsciously biased about it. So I think, you know, it's, it's a complicated topic and it definitely um, requires a lot of thinking and and discussion. So.
But and a lot of these are good points, like even when we start talking about strategic, our strategic planning that we have to do. Going into our, you know, with the, in the future. So I'm taking notes here. Yeah.
To to that point, um, and Annie, thank you again for, you you keep raising very cogent points. Um, given the the current public uh, issues that are coming up around the country. What is the status of our collection and especially in terms of uh, children's and tween and teen books? In terms of the LGBTQ community, especially the trans community. Um, because if if a s, you know, a child comes in and is having these feelings and sees nothing but. Uh, sees nothing that relates to that or sees one, it's even worse to see one. Um, uh, it it could be uh, not serving a community. It it, I I'm not saying we should be promoting and proselytizing or anything like that, but I think that these are things that especially in the last decade. Have become so much more open and discussed and prevalent. Uh, that we should, we should probably have a survey of what of in of our own uh, collections to see whether we should be expanding those.
Yep, and that's, that's again, that's some of these activities that, you know, libraries that are embarking on this process. That's a piece of what they do is they look, I mean, I I can say that our collections are 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 nicely representing those. Those issues just because the staff have been careful to do so. But I, but again, um, there are metrics that you can use to try to make sure that you're. You're telling diverse stories, you know, that you're providing a diversity of of material.
Great.
So just, I I don't want to beat a dead horse here, Kathy, but do we have a collections policy?
Yes. It's um.
Are we going to review that at some point?
Yeah, we are. They're they're working on it. All of the, all of the librarians have just um, revisited and rewritten the guidelines. And then once they finish their guidelines, which are more detailed. Um, there's a a an overall collections policy that Maida has been working on revising. So that we can bring that back to you guys. They haven't been done in a long time, as you know, so um, they needed to be done.
And it seems like all these discussions kind of go around our our work plan and our strategic plan. So it's good that we're having these discussions because everything kind of overlaps, so.
It all relates for sure.
Relates, yes. Alright, so any other comments on number ten? That was a good discussion. Thank you, everybody. Um, and then our last discussion item, the the uh, the our work plan, our status review for the work plan.
Um, so as David said, we'll we'll put, we'll spell these out item by item on the next, on the forthcoming agendas. Um, I don't think, uh, other than what David mentioned, which is that the meeting about the Twenty First Century Committee for the Library took place. Um, you know, you approved some policy changes last month, but we didn't bring any to you this month. We haven't had time to prepare any. Um, I don't think we have a lot of activity to report unless I'm mistaken. But next month, we'll hopefully have a couple of policies at least for you guys to review.
Okay, alright, so we'll keep that on. Alright, so going into now uh, communications. And I'll I'll start on, as as you know, this is the um, the the National Library Week. And it was the National Libraries Workers Day on, what's today? April eighth, so on April sixth. Um, so I wrote a uh, a public comment to uh, our city manager. And our, the mayor, just to on, just to remind everybody about this National Library Week. And National Libraries Workers Day. And um, yeah, so that's, those are my communications. Oh, yeah, okay. And I'll stop, talk more about the board, uh, the library, the board, when I, the friends of the library, when we get to that. Um, okay, and I'll just go around uh, board members, um, looking at my screen here. David, do you have any?
No.
Comments? Okay, and Annie?
Thank you, Kathy, for everything. Really proud to be a part of the library and just your commitment to the community too. So thank you.
And Mario?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, and Dean?
You know, what I was thinking of, I've sort of commented already, but I'm enjoying getting deeper involved. And recognizing uh, the breadth of uh, purpose for the library. And what it represents in our community. Uh, so that, and I appreciate, I appreciate the input of everyone. I think we're we're attacking and and viewing these issues from a lot of angles instead of just rubber stamping or ignoring.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Dean. I like that focus, the purpose of the library. So thank you. That's a good way to kind of frame everything. So thank you. And and uh, Diana, council liaison, any comments, communications?
Dean, I'm delighted to hear you say that. I thought this would be a really good fit for you. So, thank you. As as my appointee to the trustees this year. Um, I thought you all asked such excellent questions. I'm really pleased um, to hear the. The quality of the discussion. You're very thoughtful and um, I truly believe the library is in very good hands under your stewardship. The only thing I will add is that this morning, um, city council met in close session to interview two. Uh, city manager finalists and we have made a tentative selection. Uh, we are not in a position to make an announcement yet. Um, at this point, uh, we anticipate that we will formally approve an employment contract. At our next meeting on the twenty first.
Wow.
But things, things are happening.
Good, thank you.
Um. You're very welcome.
Sally?
Hi, everyone. Again, I want to thank Kathy for doing an outstanding job, taking us through all of these challenging times. And taking your staff through it as well.
Thank you.
For the friends, uh, as Bianca mentioned, it was Library Appreciation Week. And friends have uh, launched the Library Appreciation Month. We have a banner outside the library. And a couple of our committee members have um, gathered treats that they'll be putting on a table in the lunchroom every Monday. Um, we have uh, personal notes of appreciation that were written by myself to thirty plus employees. And included a gift card to Callie. Uh, Ron Kirchi, the poet laureate, wrote uh, several haikus. That are on display and framed that are about the library. I'll try to get a picture of those for the press. Um, we also have a framed note of appreciation that sits on the, on the table. So I'm hoping that's going well.
It's really nice. Thank you very so much. The staff are really uh, touched. You know, it means a lot to them. I've eaten about ten C's lollipops since Monday.
Oh, I bought those. Great.
They're, they're going, they're going, they're going fast. They're great.
Great. And Sally, the banner out on the entrance is just lovely. It's simple, clean.
Right.
It's just, it's a lovely banner. So whoever designed it, good job.
Great, great. Yes, we have good people.
Yeah.
And as far as the Twenty First Century Committee, you'll be glad to know we've scheduled our first meeting with five people. And uh, we'll be meeting next week. Um, and at some point, I know you plan to have a liaison. Uh, right now, we're still meeting with just the five of us. One of them includes uh, not a person um, on the board. But a person who formerly worked for the L.A. Public Library Foundation. The other um, news is that the board has approved the purchase of the uh, kiosk that the library was asking for. And uh, hopefully that will be in place once the library opens. And that's to um, dispense tablets, as far as I know. And uh, so that, that's about a forty thousand dollar purchase. We've also, as you know, sent letters to the, to California senators and Congresswoman Chu about the libraries, Bill libraries. Uh, Act. And Kathy said that Congresswoman Chu is now co-sponsor of it as well. Just this week, Kathy uh, joined me in a presentation to the Women's Club. Uh, talking about everything that the library's been doing over the last year. There were twenty-two people on Zoom. And I think they were really surprised at how much the library does and has been doing. Uh, after Kathy and I presented, uh, members gave book, brief book reports of about a minute each. And they all had recommendations for books that other people would enjoy. And Kathy responded so quickly and she said, we have all of those books and the one or two that we don't, we're buying. So I think um, the the Women's Club has as its mission to uh, support libraries. So I uh, see a good opportunity for the friends to partner, partner with them. Uh, in, I'm not sure what way, but I think they will be good partners for us. Regarding the closed bookstore, Kathy has offered the library community room as a place. Where um, we could collect donations that are out there. There's thousands and thousands of books out there waiting to be donated. And uh, since the library is not going to open till the middle of May or so, we kind of had a little, you know. Time in here that perhaps we could do that. So um, the bookstore committee is is um, arranging a tour of the existing spaces. That they have to organize books and will be working on possibly accepting donations in the library community room. The um, major fundraiser for the friends is at the um, the holiday book sale. And so during the year, they collect these high quality books and get them ready for that sale. So I would love to have a successful sale, um, where we could make like ten thousand dollars. And that's all I have. If you have any questions or comments, I'd love to hear them.
Alright, thank you, Sally.
Thank you for making that purchase. Please let the friends know. That's an amazing donation that you guys were able to provide. I'm sure it's going to be super helpful.
Yeah, and I, it'll be a good um, kind of visibility thing for when the library opens. We have this new technology. And it'll be a nice, you know, shiny new thing.
Yeah, hopefully we can do it, Sally, like in conjunction with um, when people are allowed to sit around in the library again. So it'll be, that'll be like our big splash when that time comes.
Come on, Dean, you must have something to say.
No, I'm just listening. I I'm, I uh, I I have. No, I'm just listening, I I'm, I uh I I have thoughts, but nothing to share at the moment.
Later.
Okay.
Well, and I uh I got to go to the last uh uh Friends of the Library, I, David wasn't able to go, so I went, and wow, you guys do a lot, you cover a lot, you're very busy on uh board, and um and I liked being there, so thank you, um. Well, one of the things the, that I really like at the library, uh the Friends does, is they put out the uh the the calendar, and I thought that's very helpful, helpful, so maybe I'll think about something, maybe Kathy, you and I can do something like that, where they just um just, you know, the yearly thing, so that was
We have, we we have like a uh forecast, a board forecast document that lists the things that, like the main things, but yes, we can share that with you and work on it together.
Right, and then I I don't, I don't remember i- if the last month ever, just goes by so fast, but uh the Friends did celebrate their seventy-first year? Is that, yes, so, yeah, I think all of us, uh hopefully, we all knew of, knew of that, so congratulations, seventy-one years in the city. And on the Friends newsletter, I didn't know this, but it's now electronic, so.
Only electronic.
Electronic, so I uh, so for instance, uh someone like my mom who does, doesn't do emails, she's a member, so I kind of mentioned that to Sally, and what what I'll do is uh I, you know, I'm just gonna print it out for her, because I didn't know it was all going electronic, so, and I don't know, is that, is that gonna be an issue?
I'm sure it's going to be an issue for some people, we just did a mailing to those members uh who do, we don't, do not have an email for them, letting them know that we're going to electronic communications for most things, not for all, we will probably do some type of mailings, but we can't really sustain the dual the dual systems.
Right, well, you know, and then without the um you know, uh yeah, I think, you know, once the senior center opens up again, I'm hoping that uh, you know, the computers will be accessible so that many of the seniors then can access a lot of the electronic stuff, um because my mom, she just doesn't have that capability at home, so. But uh, and I think, uh, yeah, and that's all I have to say about the the Friends, but it was a very good meeting, and and thank you again for letting us uh go to those meetings.
Thank you for coming.
And uh, back to you, Kathy, do you have any other?
I I don't have anything else, just um, you know, the budget was approved, so now we know how much money we have to spend, and uh tomorrow, we will um start putting in our requests to amend purchase orders, um increase those amounts, and try to get our our money spent before the before the end of the year, so that's sort of our focus is is dealing with our budget um and getting ready to offer in-person services again, and we also um uh, what was I thinking? I can, I forget, I had something in my mind, but it's, sorry, it's gone.
Oh, and I, and I, and I forgot, did we announce about the crowdsourced poem?
That's what it was.
There, yeah, so uh
Yeah, so so um we published this week our crowdsourced community poem by our poet laureate, uh Ron Kirchi. And this was, as we think, I think we mentioned before, it was Ron's idea, Ron and Bianca's idea, because they were inspired by Kwame Alexander and Amanda Gorman. Um, so we put out a call for uh ideas, snippets, um phrases that Ron would then work into a poem that he would write. And so we published that this week, and that is on our website, and you can click through to it from our social media. Um, and I think that it's in the South, the South Pasadena, and put it online, and I think the South Pasadena Review will publish it, but they missed the, they didn't get it in this week, but it'll be next week. So thank you to Ron and to Bianca, it was a lot of fun, and and we had a lot of different kinds of people contribute, you know, we had little kids, grownups. Um, and very interesting, thoughtful, you know, things, some people submitted almost like poetry themselves, and other people just submitted sort of ideas, and so it's amazing that Ron was able to put it all together, really great.
Yeah, and 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 everybody who submitted, they got, their names were acknowledged in print, that's nice, so it was really a community crowdsourced poem, so, yeah.
And I'll, and I will say that the app, we have about four hundred, a little more than four hundred downloads, so not as many as we would like.
I downloaded
That was one, that's good.
I did it.
Some outreach to uh to the schools, um to see if we can get some, some of the, you know, high school students and other students uh downloading, but but it's a good start, it's a good start.
Yeah. Alright.
I don't, I don't think I have anything else, the crowdsourced poem was the thing that I was forgetting.
Yeah, I forgot about that too, any other last comments or? Alright, then we'll adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-seven, and yeah, alright.
Thank you, everybody.
Night, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, see you next month.